So it is five forty-five, so I'm going to call this meeting to order and we can start with attendance. My name is Sydney Zuluk, I represent Bloomington City Council District Six. I am here.
Matt Flaherty, I'm an at-large representative on the council.
Well, District Four City Council.
Um, said something else does Jennifer Crossley.
I'm Drew Heron, I'm a real estate agent at Remax Clay Properties here in town and I'm here to interview for the Historic Housing Commission.
Wonderful. Welcome. Thank you for being here. I'll open the floor to my colleagues. Questions?
Sure. Yeah, thanks so much for your interest in your application for the Historic Preservation Commission. Maybe we can start by just telling us a little bit more in your own words about like what interests you about the commission, why you decided to apply?
Yeah, so I was trying to give you a little background about myself a little bit. So I've been in real estate for about three years now. I'm getting ready to get closer to four and I've been brought into the new construction side of everything. So I feel like I've got a really good base on, you know, new construction, planning and everything of that sort. But then I'm lacking kind of the extra knowledge that would go into the normal historic side of everything. So I decided to kind of diversify my knowledge, expand my knowledge as well on, you know, both sides of everything. That way I can be kind of a well-rounded agent myself for my own business, but also get a better understanding of the community that we have here in town. There's a lot of different historic areas and it's kind of nice to, you may be still in touch with that. It seems like the state as well from some of the research I've been doing that got different layers of historic commissions or not commissions, but you know, zoning here and something. Yeah.
Thank you.
My turn?
Yes.
Okay. Uh, great to meet you, Mr. Heron. So, um, have you, have you attended any historic preservation meetings either virtually or live?
Uh, I haven't had a chance to be one live, but I did get to watch a portion of the last meeting that was going on. So I got a kind of a base understanding of kind of
Recording in progress.
That is done during a commission meeting. So it was a had to hear, hear a lot about a retaining wall and about a thirty minute section of that. So it was a, but give me a good understanding of what to expect and also, you know, how we're helping the community either stay in line with the historic, you know, designations that are out there for certain homes and how to maintain that as well.
Well, good. Um, they had a lot. I just, I noticed their agenda. They, they had a lot on their agenda. They had a lot of
That was a two hour and thirty minute meeting. I didn't quite get through all of it, but I got a good understanding from there.
Yeah, every, everything from, you know, allowing solar, solar panels to, uh, a, a certain gate and so forth. But there are so, there are some major ones like demolition delay.
Yeah.
And I'm, you know, that's probably one of the, you know, you know, most important things that was, you know, powers that were given to the commission was the, you know, the delay in a demolition to evaluate the, the, the home and, and so forth. Could, could you give us a little feel for like what, what would you be considering?
Um.
Demolition delay process?
Two, two of the things that kind of stuck out, I mean, this still kind of aligns with demolition on to a smaller aspects, not quite a full-size home itself, but one of them was a garage that was built on the side of a property that was in just disarray. It was really falling apart. And the petitioner came in asking for it to be demolished and proposed a plan and how to reutilize that space. And part of the reason that she was, you know, wanting to get the demolition done is because there were college students, you know, running around jumping on top of it and then putting themselves at risk. So putting the risk on the property owners and also the college students themselves. So having the power to give that demolition process, but then also she proposed inside her request to then use the same styling of limestone that was used to rehabilitate that small section. How that we were going to do it will kind of determine the overall look, whether that's, you know, having a retaining wall and filling in that land, just extend the land overall. And then then there was a question about, you know, parking, which neither here nor there, but the safety part of it is what a big part of, um, what I enjoyed about that. So that was a big part of, um, something I took out of that. And the next one was, it was, um, filling in a pool. So an older lady, she's had a pool for about forty years and, uh, her kids are gone, her husband's gone, and she was just kind of there by herself and this pool is falling apart, leaking, and it's just not something that she can utilize anymore. And it was also becoming a safety hazard for her because she can't swim. She's a walker. So if you would rather have it filled in and utilizes more of a green space rather than an empty pool in her backyard is kind of more of a hazard. So things of that nature spoke a lot to me because it was more of a, a safety concern for people. In terms of, you know, demolition of a, a full home, it would just come down to, you know, how much of, in disarray is the home? Is it too much of a safety hazard to be rebuilt from where it's at? Is the foundation caving in? Because if the foundation's already a huge issue, then you're going to have a hard time keeping the main part of the structure in good shape until that's taken care of. So, um, and I've worked with another agent in town. She, uh, I bought a home just off of, uh, um, High Street where she had to, it was a historic home, but well, what they did was that they tore apart, tore down the home, but then, you know, preserved um, portions of the foundation that were still in good shape. That way they can kind of still keep the integrity of the historic aspect of that home while also bringing a new home to the community that was in much better shape. Because before it was a, uh, as she called it, a cesspool filled with water on the corner of High Street, which, you know, as pastor fires, it's not a good look, but now it's being utilized properly.
Uh, well, you, you've exhibited quite a lot of knowledge of that particular meeting. I appreciate that. Uh, could I just ask one more follow-up just to
Yeah.
to ask, um, so it, you know, this, uh, the deliberations are sort of, you know, trying to walk a line between, you know, retaining the character of historic structures and being too stringent in terms of use or cost. Do you, you feel you can walk that, can you know,
Yeah.
sort of balance those two poles?
Yeah, understanding the balance between having a preserving the historic nature of the site while also being as cost efficient on the, um, petitioner in question is, is something that I would, I would like to make it a point for myself because last thing I don't want to do is go out of my way to make it even harder for someone to, or make them the cost of even more on a project. I want to be able to make sure it's fair and also in line with the historic nature of the area. So.
Mm-hmm. Great. Thank you. I appreciate your, um, your answers.
Can you, um, I just have one more question and that is, do you anticipate any conflicts and interest? Given your line of work? And if you do, um, how would you approach that?
Uh, when it comes to conflict or interest, I would just, you know, if, if at all possible, would just recuse myself, especially if, um, if it's regarding a family member, because obviously, you know, that's, there's some bias there. So um, obviously refusing myself is the easiest portion. And then, um, obviously I can still be a form of insight for people and a resource for people to utilize. But taking myself out of certain situations, whether that's involving myself with someone directly in my office, with families over there, then it's probably just recuse myself.
It's great. Thank you. Anyone else have any questions?
Yeah, um, maybe, uh, two, a couple of things, just more logistical in nature. Um, when we're appointing commissions, we always want to make sure folks are generally available to attend meetings, you know, with rare, relatively rare conflicts. Also, while virtual attendance is, uh, can, can be relied upon, also in exceptional circumstances, all meetings have to have a majority in person. So like, uh, just wanted to check in on your ability to attend those, uh, kind of bi-weekly Thursday evening, five to seven, uh, mission meetings.
The, the good thing about my job is that it is very flexible and I can kind of create my own schedule. So as long as I can, you know, keep my clients I work with in line with the schedule that I want to focus on and being a part of these commissions or any other, you know, committees I want to be a part on. So, um, my flexibility makes it easier to be a part of these things. And then obviously I have to be careful with my five-month old a little bit because, you know, sometimes kids are unpredictable in terms of health. So that'd be kind of my only potential restriction.
Gotcha. And then just another note or, uh, prior information, uh, that, uh, there are both mayoral appointments and council appointments to the commission and the council appointments. Correct me if I'm wrong, but they're, they're not voting.
Correct.
Correct. So we have seen a, a fair number of occasions where folks are elevated from a, a non-voting council appointment to a mayoral appointment and everybody participates equally with the exception of voting on, uh, proposals or, you know, petitions. So just wanted to make sure you're aware of that as well.
Okay. So, um, so you're saying that in a role that I would be potentially filling in as a non-voting role, but I would still give some insight and some clarification on, you know, how some things could be taken advantage of. And then there's a possibility now or in the future to be elevated to a voting portion.
That's more than likely.
Okay.
Gotcha. Uh, Dave, more questions, sir?
No, no, I'm satisfied. Um, thanks. Thank you for, uh, for coming and sharing with us.
Thank you very much for your time.
I'll have one follow-up maybe, um, kind of related to what, uh, Casper Morales was sharing, which is just that, um, uh, we have a lot of guidance actually about how these decisions should be made with it. So we have city code and other, you know, historic districts that, uh, neighborhoods or districts adopt that should like guide the decision-making and there are balancing things like public safety and cost and feasibility. So all that's kind of contained uh, within a framework that is part of formal city policy. So that's kind of what's meant to guide the decision-making. Of course, there is judgment involved. So you are balancing and weighing those things, but just wanted to also clarify that. Uh, it's not abstract. It's quite specific.
Yeah, it's specific and then it all goes to in line with the planning codes as well because they're also intertwined. So you have restrictions on brand, historic levels and then planning goals as well. So they're always kind of coming in on some way.
Yeah, I just wanted to, I guess, check in with you. Do you think, yeah, your skill set, uh, and interests are well-suited to that type of, uh, process?
Yeah, my, my interests are definitely in line with that and just, you know, gaining a better understanding on both sides of everything. Obviously my skill set set for improvement, at least that's a goal of mine to continuously educate myself and uh, attend regular meetings to make sure I'm still following up with some changes that are going on. I know there were some recent changes and, um, what's it called zoning? At one point we went from like forty-three down seventeen or whatever the numbers were. So trying to stay in line with that and understanding what's going on.
Okay.
More in mind. Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you.
Um, just so you know, we are having a co-hosted meeting with the HBC on October fifteenth for like a deliberation on Bloomington historic code and how we might be able to change it so that it works for more people. So you are more than welcome to come attend that as well. It's on, um, Wednesday, October fifteenth at six thirty.
Right. Is that posted on your guys' calendar here?
Yes.
Perfect. I will look that up as well.
Great. Thank you so much. I'm so loving to meet you officially.
Yeah.
Great, great to meet you. Virtual handshake.
You as well. Yeah.
Was gonna share next up. So
Go ahead.
Let's do it. Oh, uh, just that, um, so we're a committee of the council that makes recommendations to the council for appointments. Uh, so we also have some other interviews for the Arts Commission tonight, then we'll deliberate as a, as a committee, make, uh, recommend any recommendations on appointments. Jennifer coordinates those, uh, with the clerk's office and council, and it usually takes a few weeks before those actually appear on our agenda for a formal vote by the council, who is the appointing entity.
Okay.
It's fully, so you can always check in, uh, with Clark Crossley if you have questions. Um, uh, but you could expect to hear from us, I would say, in the next two to three weeks sometime.
I won't bother you too much.
You're totally fine. All good.
And that is all?
Awesome. Well, thank you guys for your time. I really appreciate it.
You have a good night. It's nice meeting you as well.
Hi.
Hello.
Welcome in.
Welcome.
I'm in the right spot.
Yeah. Are you Brandy?
I am.
Yes. Okay.
I'm glad you're up. Where do you, where would you like, wherever you would like to sit.
If you would sit here, you could also see our third colleague, uh, who is
Leave the door open?
Yes. Yeah, it has to be open.
Hi.
Hi. Hi.
Hello.
Thank you.
Thanks, sir.
Yeah, for the invite.
Hey, is everybody here?
Okay, welcome both of you. Thank you so much for being here. We are gonna go ahead and get started with just some questions. Do you like to start?
Sure. Uh, great to meet you both. I'm Matt Flaherty. I'm an at-large, uh, city council member, one of the three committee members here uh, responsible for making recommendations to the Arts Commission, uh, for appointments to the Arts Commission. Uh, maybe we just start with introduction. So, uh, we can, and for each question, maybe I suggest that we alternate who goes first. Uh, to keep it fair in a sense. Uh, so maybe, uh, Brandy, we can start with you in the room for this first one, which is just maybe tell us a little bit about yourself and what got you interested in serving on the Arts Commission and then I'll go ahead and then, thanks.
So my name is Brandy McDonald. My pronouns are she/her. I, um, have, uh, I currently work as the executive director at the Museum of Archaeology and Anthropology. Um, I am deeply passionate about supporting arts within the community. I think it's the driving force. Um, from a lot of the work that I do within museums, even though I'm from cultural anthropology, art is an underlying factor, especially looking at the foundations for building creative capital, uh, and especially when I think about a lot of communities that are either underserved and rural communities and, uh, many communities that I've worked with within indigenous communities. Um, artists are the heartbeat of ensuring that, um, cultural revitalization and traditions are there. They're also typically the economic drivers and support systems of most of the families with a lot of the communities I work. And so seeing and coming here in Bloomington and the ways in which that the community connects to the artists and the way that art, um, and just I think that the community cares about each other and how art is that connecting factor. Uh, and the way that I've seen the Arts Commission support those initiatives and build a stronger foundation uh, for a variety of different touchpoints for art, I think it's just fantastic. And I want to be a part of that. I want to be able to leverage the work that I've done with, um, creating these points of connection, of supporting creative capital and figuring out how I can be of the service to the community that I now belong to.
Thank you.
Oh.
Welcome.
Oh, no, might have. Nice.
Oh, she's here. She just has her camera turned off.
There's it. Message in the chat. Oh, there we are. Yeah, hi.
Oh. Hi, I'm sorry. I'm, I'm a little bit trying to figure out what the procedure is. So, um, my name is Lynn Hooker. I have just, uh, rejoined the Bloomington community. I was here for a time and left in twenty fifteen and I'm returning. Um, uh, and I come to this, um, application as, as a music scholar. I've, I've been involved in music for my whole life. Uh, one of the wonderful things about the Bloomington community is how richly as, as, um, uh, the previous candidate who, I should have written down your name, uh, that had, uh, just spoke about the, the way that the arts bring people together and excuse me, and, and specifically how, um, uh, music is, is such an important thing for, for creating opportunities for, for social interaction, for, um, for people to participate together for, as well as for people to, to appreciate the, um, the one beautiful artists that, that come to, together in Bloomington of all kinds of genres of music and um, as, as well as people who are, have been resident in the region for a long time. Um, supporting the, the sort of the synergies that the that the arts and, and especially music is, which, given that that's my area of expertise, um, bring to the community, it seems like a, a really important thing that the, I've just now really, um, become more aware of, of what the commission can do for that. Uh, and I am in, interested in being a part of it and seeing what I can contribute in, in terms of, of my knowledge and, and bringing together, um, other, um, uh, aspects, other different kinds of, of music and, and arts and, um, the perspectives that, that I bring from having lived both in Bloomington and other parts of the state and, um, and finding out what, uh, the Arts Commission can, can do to leverage the the resources of the city to, to keep that, um, great energy going.
Thank you.
Dave, do you have any questions?
Hmm, sure. Um, we'll have several, but I'll just make it one. Great to meet you both. Um, well, since you're going to be potentially serving on the Arts Commission and it's an advocacy role and your, your, your focus on different types of art and so forth, is there, is there anything particular that is lacking in the community that you see as a, as a primary focus or, or priority?
You know, Lynn, to go for, yeah, let's help Lynn go first.
So, so this is something that honestly I, I need to do more research about what the current state of things is. My, um, my overall impression from the, as, uh, you know, again, returning to the community, I was there for eleven years and now I'm, I'm coming back after being away. Um, is that I'm, I'm constantly just, um, overjoyed at how much wonderful art of all kinds there is going on in the Bloomington community. I know that the, the though, that there are always challenges in terms of finding spaces, finding support. Um, I know that right now, um, for example, the, the Lotus Festival has been this enormously, um, wonderful resource for the last several decades in, in the community. And I know that they are, um, facing struggles with visas and the kinds of things that some of the things that have made it, it's such a great, um, uh, event, um, really is, uh, their ability to bring in musicians from all over the world. And that's not something that is going smoothly right now. Uh, and, and that's not just that one event, but the relationships between, um, the city and its international population at large are currently facing some interesting challenges and it's, um, obviously the, the city is constrained by, um, the framework in which we live and I would not want to cause problems where they don't, where one does not need to have problems, but it is also important to, to advocate for the, that continuing multicultural richness that the community has represented for so long. And that, so that would be what I would say.
Very good. Thank you, Lynn. And we, we know those constraints. We're feeling them all the time. Uh, Brandy, what, what do you think?
Yeah, so part of the practice that I try and, um, embrace is that I am not necessarily an expert on what the folks that I work with or work for and work in community with are like what they want. And so I when I think about like what are gaps within the community, my first response is what, have we collected data from the, what is the community saying that are the gaps? Um, because I'm not the expert on peoples in the various communities and the various pockets of the communities. I know that I live in Bloomington, but I'm not an expert on all of Bloomington. And so I'd really be interested to see what people are identifying as their gaps. Uh, and I'd like to have those conversations and kind of dive in because I I feel like I'm a catalyst to try and figure out how to be to make those things come into action because I think community-led and community-driven is recognizing and humbling yourself that yes, I know things uh, and I want to take action, but I don't know what they see because they, they, they live it every day. And so that's where I would go in terms of the gaps. I would think about that because I have my ideas. Uh, but something working within a variety of different communities has taught me that if I come in with my own ideas and I'm like, let's do this. The community is like, that's not important to us. Um, even if I, like, I've done this within indigenous communities when I worked in Pine Ridge, South Dakota, and I had all these ideas about murdering, missing indigenous women, and I was going to do all these art projects and we're going to do language. And I came in very excited to do these programs that I thought were gaps within the reservation or within Indian education. And the community was like that we don't care about this. We want to do this or we want to focus. And the students were like, we want to focus on poetry. And so then we were able to do poetry because that's what they wanted to do, but still talk about a lot of these situations. And so what that has taught me, um, in my work within museums and community work has been that is to take a pause and say, well, what, what do you all see? And then me figuring out what are the systems in place for me to try and put those places in action? Or to understand like, okay, we've identified if there is a gap like in, um, supporting community artists, or maybe artists are saying that they're not being paid enough. Then what does it look like to create platforms around business development? Because perhaps we're not looking at our budgeting appropriately. And that artists are not always so taught to create budgets or don't always taught around like value-driven pricing, uh, because we also have bills to pay and food to be in. And that's you have to find the balance between that. And so I don't, well, I think that there are things that are like, could be missing, um, when I think about different community representation without knowing what folks want, it just it, it doesn't align with my values. Uh, yeah, that's kind of how I would answer that. Is what are folks saying are the gaps? And then how can I start thinking strategically with uh, the other folks on the committee and also thinking about how do we leverage different resources to make those come to fruition?
Thank you.
Yeah.
Great.
I have a question. Oh. If I could remember it. Um, okay. So one of the things that the Arts Commission does is they, uh, grant funds to community artists who have applied for, I think it's up to two thousand dollars in arts grants. What would you look for in applicants when reviewing the applications?
Yeah, so I reviewed a variety of different types of applications, especially in terms of targeting for arts and arts of sustainability or arts during the midst of the, the impact of the pandemic. And so typically when I review grants, um, we, I look at the format of what the grant like granting initiatives that we've asked them to outline, but I also look to make sure their budget is written in a way that covers a lot of the costs. Have they thought about sustainable impact? Are they paying themselves? And if that's a gap in the space or is our granting format to where we go back and say, you know, can you revise this? Or if that's not the format that we've had, then that maybe is and not right now, we provide feedback later on. So when then they reapply later, that they can start thinking critically to making sure that they're not only covering their supplies, but are they paying their hourly wages at the same time? Um, because I think sustainability, both in terms of them themselves as an artist, but also in relationship to community is really important. Uh, because that means that we're investing in the long-term, um, community's health. Uh, and artists just paying their supplies because they just want that project done. I think it's lovely, but it also doesn't help their longevity as an artist and as a community member. Um, and I think the hustle is not always sustainable for anyone, uh, and not sustainable for the health of the community. So I look at that. I also think it's really important when we think about the narrative, like what is the impact? Is it when we think about like, what are we valuing as impact? Is it impact quantitative measurements where they're gonna impact a hundred people? Or is it really thinking about qualitative? Are we thinking about the ways in which it's going to inspire the next generation of artists? Or the way that it's going to support, um, uh, either like support, uh, some of the initiatives that we have or that the mayor has for a healthy environment or if it's thinking about like underserved communities or is it going to create spaces for like, to have conversations around the housing situation? So I think you're trying to like, think about what is the larger initiatives that we have and does that align with what we're thinking about granting? Um, and without knowing that right away, it would be hard to kind of link it in, but I think it's, it's kind of how I try and weave the basket essentially.
Thank you. Lynn?
Um, yes, um, this is, um, all the sort of ties in with some of, um, my, um, really I come to this with as many questions as I do answers. I think that what is it? Brandy, uh, has said that, um, uh, in an ideal situation, we're able to, to gather together artists of, of different fields who are able to both, um, develop themselves as artists continue doing their art, which again does require, you know, paying your bills and, and getting fed. Um, but also sort of speaking to different parts of the community, some of which are going to be very, um, uh, you know, organizations of longstanding that have a long tradition of, of working with, with the city, others that may not. There are certain spaces that the, that the city uses on a very regular basis. I'm sure that there are so, also parts of the city that have less contact with some of these organizations and kind of performances. It would be interesting to try and find ways to, to um, make more contact with, with more parts of the city that might not, not have had that before. I'm sure I'm not the first person to to take a look at that kind of question, given the kind of place that Bloomington is. I know that there are a lot of people that have these kinds of issues, um, and, and desires for, for the, the direction we want our community to go. So, um, in, in terms of, of how to evaluate grants, honestly, I haven't looked at, at what is coming into with, with the, the applications that people are, are giving. One of my questions though, uh, you know, before looking at those things is how are those things being advertised? Who knows about them ahead of time? Is there a way to make sure that, um, that, that, that things are broadly, um, known before we start collecting the applications in the first place? Um, and exactly how that would be done, whether it's, you know, partially through places like the public library or, um, or other community centers in, in different parts of town. Um, those things should be prioritized as, uh, the, as well as making sure that the artists are able to, who, who are, you know, applying and, and that the committee judges to be worth supporting are able to have a budget that's, that sustains them going forward and, and, uh, there's too much, you know, doing it for exposure or just to, to pay for the paper that you're using. And, and we need, we want to to help people thrive beyond that, as, as Brandy has said.
Thank you.
Thank you. Does anyone else have any questions?
Uh I have a small, just but important question, which is uh confirming both your. Uh commitment and availability to attend the monthly uh Arts Commission meetings, which I believe are on. Wednesdays, second Wednesdays from five to six thirty. Um we also generally let people know that, you know. It may involve some, you know, it says five hours per month on the the commission page is the estimated time commitments. There is some out of meeting time as well. So just confirming availability, commitment, that kind of thing. So yeah, I guess we can check in uh Lynn first with you and then Brandy.
Um my and. When se- second Wednesday of each month, um there are going to be a few second Wednesdays that I might have to be traveling. Um but for the most part, that sounds very doable. Um there might be times when I would need to do it remotely, but I. I'm planning on doing it um in person as much as possible.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, I would say as similarly, I've looked at the bylaws in terms of how to how many to miss, and I I do have some trouble travel scheduled. Um that is a part of my work really related travel, but I don't think that those. Either fall on the second Wednesday or would um impact it to where I wouldn't align with any of the bylaws. And so as long as it's on my calendar, because I live on my calendar. I'm not sure that many of us do, uh because it runs my life and my dog's life. Um that I I'm perfectly fine with being able to do it. Um and I appreciate the fact that you also pivoted to create it um like access points for Zoom, but for the most part, I think I can physically do it similar to what Lynn has set you up.
Great. Thank you. Thank you both so much. Um I think, well, do you wanna do the?
That's the problem. The next best uh wrap. Thought y'all have to expect. Um so we have one vacancy, one council-appointed vacancy in the Arts Commission, though I I know there's also a mayor role vacancy right now. There's both council-appointed, mayor-appointed seats. We are a we are three council members making up a committee that makes recommendations to the full council. For appointment. Generally, those recommendations are um adopted. Uh and we have some lag time between our ability to make that recommendation and the council's ability to take it up, so that people have time to review applicants themselves. But I would say within the next three weeks or so, give or take, you'd expect uh to hear one way or the other uh from Deputy Clerk Crossley. Um and if you have questions, of course, you can reach out as well.
But. It's just sorry, just a question. Will it be via email or just just keep track of my email?
Yeah.
Wonderful.
And we really appreciate you both expressing interest in in serving on the Arts Commission. Thank you.
Thank you. Nice to meet you, Lynn.
Likewise, good to meet you.
Sorry.
No, good to see you both. Thank you.
Okay, have a good good meeting, good evening.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Get out of y'all's hair.
Sounds good.
Thank you.
Thanks for coming in. Nice to meet you.
Nice to meet you. Thanks for coordinating us.
Yes, thank you.
Door openers.
Yes, thank you.
Have a good night.
You too. Okay, we discussed both. Do we wanna talk?
Yeah.
Let's see the first?
Yeah, let's do it.
Thoughts?
Are you throw out some ideas?
Yeah.
I think I think uh first of all, I think that Drew is qualified. He's interested. He's been following what's going on. I think he's up to the task. Um so I I think he's a good appointment. And what do we have? Two seats available, is that right?
We have.
I think so.
Yeah, that's a couple.
C two, C four?
Yeah.
So I would I would go ahead and nominate him for one.
Okay.
Uh anybody else have any impressions or would you rather wait?
I'm happy to.
That sounds good. And they're different terms. C two might make um. More sense, because that turned over at the beginning of this year, so it's a longer time remaining.
Okay, I'm only uh drew Heron for uh Historic Preservation Commission, seat C two.
Second.
Okay, yeah, that one is.
C four.
Yeah, I was about to say that one is up at the end of the year.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Oops. Oh, C four then.
Yeah, it's uh, yeah.
I was like reading that as like a January turnover, like a turnover just happened. Second. Yes, second.
All right, so we got.
C four.
Um who's second? I'm sorry. Okay. Okay, so uh. Rallo?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Zulik?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you for that. BAC.
I thought they were both uh interested and have strong backgrounds. I was especially impressed with. Brandy's both like framework and level of preparation, I guess, with respect to. Good goodness, reading commissioned bylaws. That's a rarity.
I really liked her approach.
Yeah.
Um the only thing that I will say about Lynn is that I I spoke with Holly about the recommendation. And she said that the person who stepped off of the board had a background in music. And so it would be um. Filling that gap that was created on the VAC. So if there were to be like. I was also just. A little bit more drawn to Brandy's approach, but that is something to keep in mind, that the music part is the gap right now.
Yeah. Oops, sorry.
Oh, no, I was just gonna say really quick. I'm sorry. Um the mayor's office is also um looking at Brandy as well. And so they are strongly considering her for appointment too.
Oh, interesting. Well, I liked her ar- archaeology background and I thought maybe bringing in, you know, since she worked with native cultures. That's a very positive thing, interesting. Um but yeah, yeah, your point, your point, Sydney, is very good. It's uh about, you know, we wanna make sure that all, you know, visual theater and music. You know, dance, everything is represented, so. Um how certain are we, Je- Jennifer, that the mayor? I mean, you you they're very strong.
Very much.
Yeah, Brandy?
Yeah, very much so, because um I had talked to Julius and he was interested in reaching out to um a point. And I had said you should wait, because she's been identified for council to interview. And so him and I will chat tomorrow and I'll let him know that this was a really good interview. And that she seems to have a favorable rate in between or council members, it seems like as a whole. So it it definitely seems as though it is a for sure thing. And in fact. He mentioned that she came recommended from somebody else on the commission.
Okay.
Mm-hmm. Okay, so we could fill both seats, the mayor role and council essentially with these two candidates.
Yeah, I don't have any problems with that.
What do you think, Matt? I mean, you know, it it's true that Lynn seemed to be kind of um. Maybe she was just flustered or something, but she. She didn't seem to be as well-prepared. But I don't wanna discount for that. I mean.
Right.
Happens.
Oh, yeah, and people just present differently, and that's okay, too. Um but uh. So say, I mean, if the. I appreciate staff lies and recommendations. At the same time, I mean, they're also. Uh work within the executive branch and the mayor, the mayor has an appointment here, too. Like, there's no reason that because the previous council-appointed seat had a music-oriented person that like. That seat needs to be the one versus like the mayoral seat or whatever. So I I don't really care. It sounds like it's a high likelihood that if we be. Uh like my preference would be to appoint Brandy and or to recommend appointment of Brandy, and that's uh more of a sure thing in that sense from where we sit. Uh for that candidate. But on the other hand, uh. It sounds like if we make that recommendation, we can even do so formally to the mayor's office as well and appoint Lynn instead. That.
On Jennifer's.
We have, it would probably go through, but yeah.
Yeah, oh, so uh in other words, Matt, we would recommend to the mayor that Brandy be appointed?
Yeah, I think we've we could we've done that before and we could even do so formally if we want. Yeah.
Yeah, yeah. Okay, good. Um do we need a motion for that recommendation, Jennifer, or can can we just informally say?
Yeah, you can just simply say it um and that should be fine.
Great.
Yeah.
Is that the right we wanna take then?
I'm fine with that.
Okay.
I do feel kind of neutral, so if you guys have strong feelings one way or another.
I don't either, no.
Can I get a motion?
So will uh will the motion then would be to point uh Lynn Hooker to seat C three, the Arts Commission?
Second.
Okay, I'll go yes. Okay, so we got Zulik. You said that was one of them?
I was waiting for the roll.
Yeah. So Zulik?
Uh, yes.
Okay, Flaherty?
Yes.
And Rallo?
Yes.
Okay.
Great, fabulous. We have five minutes till council, so is there anything else that we need to discuss urgently?
Not urgent. Um you do have uh one more uh that you just need to appoint. Um actually, two, because one, there's a an appointment that just came or a vacancy that just came up on the Commission of Sustainability. Um has somebody, uh John Eldon resigned.
Okay.
And so you got a little bit, because that one has to wait until fifteen days after having the notice out. Before you can do anything to appoint to that seat. So you got a little bit of time, but I just wanted to let y'all know that that is one that.
Okay.
Is now a seat.
And and then the committee's. Status of children and youth is the other?
Yes, yes. Um so you fulfill HBC Arts, um and the children and youth is another one. So just look for an email and we'll kind of get together again and and get another meeting schedule for that.
Thank you.
Awesome.
I will adjourn this meeting. Dave, see you in three.
See you later.
Thank you all.
Thanks. Pass up.